Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 1st, 2024 meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the pledge of leaders?
I present the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We actually have two members sitting tonight. Welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So we'll do the roll call of members. Michael Proto Chair.
Jared O'Connell Vice Chair.
Jeremy Robitaille Secretary.
Travis Tucker Member.
Russell Blanchett Member.
Letha Riley Member.
Welcome. We have with us this evening Jay Minkar from NRPC. Welcome, our Circuit Rider and Joan McKibben, our Planning Board Administrator. First item on the agenda, public input on non-agenda items. Items not on the agenda for this evening. Anybody have anything on non-agenda items tonight? Okay, hearing none, I will close public input on non-agenda items. First order of business this evening, Planning Board applicant interview. Jesse, how do you spell your last name?
No.
No.
He's silent.
Okay, it's silent, all right. If you want to come forward to the table, introduce yourself to the board.
You dropped off his resume too.
Okay, you should have, everyone should have received a copy of the application for appointment that was provided to you in your portal. And we also have a resume here for the applicant as well. Okay, so you're interested in the Planning Board position? And can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely, Jesse Ngo, I live at 6 Bysplush Circle.
Okay, welcome. What is your interest of the Planning Board?
Yeah, I want to serve the town and volunteer and give back. I genuinely have an interest for land planning and I'm also a quick learner.
And it looks like you have a Masters in Business Administration, you're in Resource Management.
Yes, that's right.
Good. How long have you been in Litchfield?
Three years now.
Well, okay. And your expertise is communications, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant, anybody here at the board members? So, okay, just so you know, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month. It's usually 7:00 PM, it's here in Town Hall. So is that a commitment you think you would be able to make?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, great. Did you have a question, Jeremy?
This is more a comment on interest in planning and stuff like that. So I think the Planning Board's a great fit. Anything else you might want to get into besides this or just Planning Board?
Planning Board, but I'll serve the position of greatest need.
Okay, awesome.
Cool. Have you watched any of the recent meetings?
Yes, I have.
Awesome. And have you reviewed any of the zoning or other regulations?
I reviewed them, but not cover to cover.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I took a look at the first couple of pages and I'm like, I can spend more time and learn it all.
Yeah, the best thing is to, obviously, before every meeting, review all the materials and then, then you can figure out which sections are relevant to the items on the agenda. And then you can review those in more depth.
So typically what happens, I have a question, have you met with the town administrator at all?
I have not, no.
Okay. It's my understanding typically that before something gets put on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen.
I'm confused because I did ask her about this application.
Because I know she usually wants to vet the applicants, my understanding?
I think she did. She said, go ahead and send them to the Planning Board.
Okay, so she did, she did say that. Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
I think we have a full board, so it would be an alternate position, I think.
Yes, I believe so, yeah. So typically what happens is we would make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to approve you to be a member of the Planning Board. So you would basically go to the Board of Selectmen meeting and it's similar situation, you would come before the Board of Selectmen and they can ask you questions if they want to, what your interests are and so forth, just like here tonight. And they will make the final approval. And then, once that happens, if they approve you, then you would go to the town clerk's office and get sworn in to become a member for your appointment. So that's basically the process. And I think this is great, I mean, we're always looking for volunteers. I think it's, you have a great resume. What does everybody else think?
I think an alternate would be fantastic.
Okay, okay. All right. So in order for us to proceed, we have to have the applicant go before the Board of Selectmen. So I would entertain a motion, if the board is so willing, to recommend to the Board of Selectmen the applicant for approval to the Planning Board for alternate member.
Right, and I'll have to make a motion to approve Jesse Ngo to the Board of Selectmen for approval to the Planning Board.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Russ. Any further discussion? Okay, take a vote. All those in favor of the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for approval as an alternate for Mr. Ngo, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained. One, two, three, six, zero, zero. Okay. So what will happen is the, I think Kim will contact him and put him on for the agenda for the next Board of Selectmen meeting, whenever that is, and you'll have to go to that meeting and obviously do the same thing here, as you did here. And then the Board of Selectmen will approve the application and then you would get sworn in, so, thank you.
And you're welcome to stay as a member of the public.
Yes, absolutely.
If you're interested. For the work session, if you're interested.
But you don't have.
I have a toddler boy at home to get back to, so thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Wish you luck. Take care. Okay. All right, next item, Rick Charbonneau, update on Rose Meadow, 255 Dairy Road, New Hampshire DOT traffic improvements.
Rick Charbonneau, I am here to represent Rose Meadow. And I have Bob Ballinger with us tonight.
Good evening.
From GPI and he's the engineer out on 102. He'll take it from here.
Okay, so Mr. Ballinger, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Pleasure to be back in front of the Litchfield Planning Board this evening. Just wanted to give, I know we have some new members of the board, I wasn't sure how in-depth you wanted to sort of go into the past history here, or if you were just looking for a few bullet points on where we stand presently. Can take this any, at the board's pleasure.
Sure. Well, yeah, we do have some new members, so maybe just a brief summary or overview of what the project is and what, where we are at this point in terms of the improvements.
Certainly. The development is for 172 townhome units. Basically, as proposed, they would utilize the former BAE driveway. I'm sure if members of the board had driven past the site recently, there is no semblance of what was formerly there anymore. There's been quite a bit of site activity with regard to constructing the new residential units. And in addition to completing a full traffic study, we had proposed some off-site improvements very early on in the process, most specifically a southbound left turn lane on Dairy Road to serve the site proper. After some feedback from this board, town staff review comments, as well as feedback from DOT, we sort of expanded upon that plan considerably. Most notably was the realignment of Cutler Road. Presently, as I'm sure board members know, it comes in at quite a skew. What we are proposing is to realign that at more of a proper 90-degree angle. And we are also continuing that three-lane section southerly. So in essence, you will also have a northbound left turn lane into Cutler Road and I'd be more than happy if, to go up to the podium to explain a little bit.
Sure.
I think if you actually, fast forward, J, not fast forward, please. I think it's sheet 16, starts with the pavement marking plan. Actually, you know, oh, now we're in the boring stuff, I'm sorry.
I think page nine is pretty good.
If you go up a couple more slides, I'm sorry, there, keep going, keep going.
Is this the content you're interested in? Start on slide 17.
Oh, it's, okay, 17, I'm sorry, 17 of 33, thank you for your assistance.
Shows the pavement markings.
Do you want me to go down or you want to stay here?
Page 17 of 33, please, if you don't mind.
If you don't mind. But of course it's frozen now.
Well, this still, I think, might give you enough flavor, but basically, here's the proposed site driveway, again, former BAE. What is proposed is separate left and right turn lanes out of the site. What the applicant is proposing and what we have preliminary sign-off on from New Hampshire DOT at the moment, is southbound left turn lane into the site. Additionally, we are going to realign Cutler Road to, again, proper 90-degree angle. And we're also providing a separate northbound left turn lane into Cutler Road. In terms of overall length of the project, you're talking about 1,600 linear feet, so just under a third of a mile in total. And most of that is driven by the speed and the geometrics that are required. So in essence, what you have here throughout the widened area, it's a three-lane section, northbound travel, southbound travel, and center-left turn lane. Each would be 12 feet wide. And we're also going to maintain four-foot shoulders. Again, we've gotten, we've gone through several rounds of comments with New Hampshire DOT. We just submitted about two weeks ago what we think are going to be the 100% design plans, so we're waiting for, again, formal, the formal checkmark on that, that we've done everything the department has required. But I think predominantly, what I want to emphasize is that, I think we really took to heart the comments that we got from the town last summer with respect to Cutler Road particularly. And there was an opportunity to not just provide what we think was needed for the site, but to also make another improvement to the public way. In terms of site distance, both locations are going to have more than adequate site distance, well in excess of New Hampshire DOT requirements. In terms of offset between the proposed site driveway and Cutler Road, you still have about 200 feet, that's well in excess of what the department would consider acceptable. So we don't see any direct conflict there. And really, we think this is the most appropriate solution for this corridor and we've gotten, again, very positive feedback from New Hampshire DOT throughout this process. That journey has taken quite a bit of time, almost about 18 months now, but we can see the finish line, it's in sight. So I think that's sort of where we are right now. Again, I would hope to have final sign-off from New Hampshire DOT within the next month or so. But I think from a high-level perspective, I can probably shut it down there for a moment and see if there's any questions from the board at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions?
I don't have any. So, hearing that DOT has sort of blessed this so far, that's, that's great, they usually don't. I'm wondering, on Cutler Road, you do dip down there, do they have any comments about that? I mean, I know there's site distance, no issue there because of the, for all intents and purposes, straight roadway, if you will, but I know it does dip down. And did they have any commentary on that?
They did not. There is a little bit of a grade, as you correctly pointed out, which will still, which will still be retained to some extent. The difficult part about working on the Cutler approach was honestly, we wanted to stay within the right-of-way. We didn't want there to be private land acquisition. If you really wanted to get rid of that grade change or that dip, this would have become a much more extensive project, I think, beyond what might be reasonable for a private applicant to undertake. But I think the department recognized the constraints, if you would like to call them that, and saw in terms of overall big picture, that this was still more beneficial than retaining what was there presently.
But it's not going to be as bad as it is now. It's coming up, there is a fill there. It's not, there's still going to go down.
So less of a dip, more of a even, yeah, okay.
That gets, that gets, you go to, you have the cross section. Yeah, you go to the cross section.
There's one for you.
Coming where? Up, down, down, leave.
There's so many cross sections.
Actually, that's it, right there. So this is, this would be Dairy Road on this side, and this would be coming westbound, or eastbound, rather, on Cutler. So you're still going to have, you know.
But there is a fill, you can see the bottom dotted line. That's current grade?
That's, that's, that's current. So we're going to raise it a little bit, try to minimize that to the extent that we can.
Yeah.
And still come in at an acceptable landing platform to tie into the main line on Dairy Road.
So basically, when the car gets, the one car gets the intersection, it'll be pretty flat. So it's not like it's, like it is right now.
Launching.
And just, just for reference, if one was not used to looking at plans like this, this is an exaggerated vertical scale, that's typically how that's shown. But yes, it would not be as pronounced if you were actually driving. And again, there is some level, the vertical scale is usually 10 times what the horizontal scale is, so there is some, some slight exaggeration here.
So are you getting the extra width by cutting into your property? Is that how you're maintaining the additional shoulder space and as well as the turning lanes in there? Because it's, it's not, it's not exactly super wide over there.
What we're doing is, when you're proposing a center-left turn lane, you have a number of options. I guess you can either bias it to one side, bias it to the other, or you can literally split it right down the middle. What we found out here, based on the existing right-of-way, the ideal solution was to actually split it right down the middle. And given the existing pavement width that you have out there, we're doing, I'll use the term gently, this is only going to require sliver widening really along Dairy Road. We're coming about four, not more than four or five feet on either side of actual new roadway. There's a little bit more work beyond that, just to make sure the drainage is taken care of properly. But in terms, because in terms of actually widening, we don't have to do much out there. And again, we're not impacting any other private properties. The entirety of this improvement will be done within the existing public right-of-way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If it didn't fit, we had enough frontage that we could have moved more over our way, but it works that way.
There may be some additional utility relocations that might be required.
There is, $100,000 worth.
Just, just a little. Sorry, we couldn't save that, but.
That's going to be a tough check to write, apparently, right there.
Again, we certainly appreciate the feedback of this board and staff. And again, we've continued to work with DOT very closely through the development of this plan. And again, I'm hoping to get a letter in the near term saying that this is 100% good to go.
And it really depends when we get that, whether we start, we definitely won't do Cutler Road this year. We may start the widening if we get it quick enough. If not, it's going to be around the middle of March. Next year we'll start and be done by the end of June. And it's not going to take very long, not even a couple of months. So it'll go pretty, pretty quick, it's pretty easy.
I have a question about speed on Dairy Road. Do DOT ever talk about the speed on Dairy Road at all, reducing it?
We talked about speed on Dairy Road in our analysis, that it's a typical due diligence thing that we measure. And what we found is that on this section of Dairy Road, the prevailing speed was actually consistent with the posted speed limit. It's posted at 45 right now, and our speed, our speed measurements revealed that the 85th percentile speed was at that 44, 45 mile per hour mark. So what this design is predicated on, you'd like the design to match the prevailing travel speed. So this was designed for a 45 mile per hour speed, consistent with, with department guidelines. Had it been higher, we may have adjusted this based on a higher speed, but we felt 45 was adequate, based on our observations. And thus far, the department is in agreement with that.
How many, how many units do you figure will be occupied over the winter?
50.
Because I, I tried to get in there Friday night at 4:30, that was a big mistake. There's a lot of traffic out there.
I guess, yeah, but it's not, there's not a lot coming in, you know, it depends probably going in, it's, you know, but that's what it's going to be.
Well, left-turning traffic's going to be hard.
Yeah, until, until we get the widening done.
Right.
It's going to happen, it's going to get done.
Yeah.
So, that'll happen.
Yeah, probably any left-hand turn at that time of day is challenging, so.
Yeah.
Well, 36, that's going to be a challenge, so.
Not going to be any worse than trying to come out of Pedro. But, once we have this, it'll be better, but until then. And did anybody, did you guys get to drive through the site to make sure that everything's looking where you expected it to look, or anything like that?
Has anyone?
I drove through, it looks like the other development that is nearby.
No, I just wanted to make sure everybody's happy that it's coming away.
I haven't got a chance yet, but I'll have to.
We'll occupy the first unit, I think, on the 11th, so.
Okay.
We're going for occupancy permits this week on the first two buildings.
Yeah, I saw them listed online.
The only other thing I'll add to that is, is part of our interim approval with New Hampshire DOT, there were still certain safety elements that we had to satisfy. There were interim discussions about making sure that the existing site lines worked based on the current geometry on Dairy Road right now. And again, there was, there was full, full department support of continuing in that manner.
And what are the plans for detours?
Detours. Oh, detour, so when we do Cutler Road, we're going to, what's that, Woodburn? Is that Woodburn?
Yeah.
We're going to just, we don't affect anybody's driveway, so they just have to come around by Woodburn and back out when we actually build that piece of Cutler Road. It'll be easier than trying to deal with them coming in and out. It'll be easier for the people and they won't be stuck in traffic, you know, they just got to go around. That's all.
We'll, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the town before we do that and with the road agent, and everybody will know what we're doing. And would it affect your own driveway?
No. It won't have any effect on our driveway.
So they won't need to detour at all?
Nope, nope, it's only for the traffic on Cutler Road.
Okay.
That people will be coming in out of Cutler Road, it's the only thing that we'd, we'd detour them to Woodburn.
So basically, you're able to do it in sections, that you don't have to close the entire section of road?
On the, on where now? On the main road?
On the Dairy Road, main road.
I know, we, there's enough room out there that we can build one side, we'll block it off, gravel it, fill it, you know, get it done every day. And then we'll get one side done and then we'll do the other side. The more we do, the more room there'll be. But there's enough width out there now. We can, we'll cone it off and go to 11-foot lanes with cones and hopefully slow the people down a little bit. People don't like to be in construction traffic. We like the people in construction traffic because it's much safer when people are grime and bias at 20 miles an hour than 80.
Okay.
Especially on the highways, the highways are the worst.
Yeah, definitely. Anybody have any other questions? And I know I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting the other night, and I know that they gave you your blessing on this. It sounds like things are good to go and guys are going to be in good shape.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. It's our work session tonight. So we have been, the Planning Board, for those of the new members this evening, the work session is usually our opportunity to look at our zoning regulations, master plan, things of that nature, and see if we want to make any changes or have any new ideas. And I know that we've had a lot of discussion about village mixed-use districts. This was something that came up at the Planning Board a while ago and we're revisiting it tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Minkar, our planner, and we can talk about that. Okay, and then have a couple more if we want to talk about them, also, just thoughts. Obviously, there's been a lot of thoughts over time. So what I thought I would do is go back and kind of trace back how we got here, well, we didn't get here, how we got to the point that we were back in 2023, I think it was, when we really looked at this. And actually, 2022. So what happened at that time is actually the gentleman who just left approached the Planning Board with an interest in seeing whether or not we would entertain putting forward zoning changes to allow multifamily in the northern commercial zone. Yeah, so right now, oh, this really, this doesn't really show it. So right now, we have a multifamily housing overlay, I don't think it's showing it on this map. It encompasses primale, yeah, it does. All right, I'm going to stand up here and kind of point to it. So the multifamily overlay does this. So it does grab a piece of the northern commercial zone here, the rest of it's in residential. This is where Corning Farm, the development has already happened. Really, there's no more opportunity within the northern commercial zone that's in the multifamily overlay. The multifamily overlay also is down here on 102, and that's showing, kind of. So it's this area down, down here. So that's why the Rose Meadows project is going in here. So the question was, would we be interested in looking at more? And part of the, and it wasn't just multifamily, there were a number of things that were talked about. Basically, the starting point was, we're seeing very little commercial development in the northern commercial zone. There are things that the town should do or may want to consider doing. So basically, I'm not going to go through this in detail, we went through a presentation that was done on the land in the northern commercial zone, what the opportunities were, and kind of a breakdown on what does it look like now? As you can see, well, if you're looking up at the chart, at this point, the predominant use, which is still be true today, is residential. Commercial use is only made up about 20% of the district. The undeveloped, undeveloped properties in the district, which is mostly still true, we've had some changes to this right down here, this area that I'm covering with my cursor is being developed, but these are the large tracts that were essentially undeveloped. What was the development potential for these sites, given the limitations that we have, just in terms of the population of Litchfield, the traffic volumes on 3A? What could we really realistically expect? I'll say these were showing undeveloped lands or lands that have the potential to be more intensely developed. There are other opportunities potentially for redevelopment in the future. That really wasn't looked at necessarily. The individual who made the presentation owns what was shaded in blue, therefore the interest. And what was, I'm not going to go through all of these details, but essentially, there was concern about the types of uses that we currently permit. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because the board did make significant changes to northern commercial zone at that time, to both clarify what was allowed and what wasn't, to specify an additional range of uses, also to allow, as a conditional use, warehousing and distribution facilities below a certain size. And to have, you know, so there were opportunities there to expand what could be done in the district commercially. And also limitations on the size of commercial uses, because people didn't want to see a big box. So that was done. Another key part of this, though, and I'm not going to go through all of this, I'm going to stop here on that presentation and go to what was. stop here on that presentation and go to what was shown as a possible way land could be developed in that district. And let me try to just zoom in on this a little bit more. But essentially, and this was only for the properties that were under the ownership of the individual, but there was a concept that was shown of basically Rose Meadows, Rose Meadows, and then kind of strip commercial development. As a scenario, a mixed-use scenario. So that got the board thinking, all right, what should we consider? So at that time, there were a couple of things that we looked at. So we had one planning board member in particular, Kate Stevens, was really one, was very interested in this topic and did a lot of research. So what I was just going to kind of run through were, first, I think what I'll start with is the language that we actually came up with that did not go forward. And that is back in our packet, if I can bear with me while I hop around. Here it is. So at the time, the concept was to allow what was called, and then I'll get into some of the details, a mixed-use village development. And there were, the idea behind this was, is that you would allow, obviously mixed use, you would allow for a variety of different types of housing within the same development. You would allow for commercial development within that same development. There, and then there are other specifications. A lot of these follow what's already allowed in the multifamily district, a maximum of six units per building. There was a lot of conversation around building size, not wanting things, you know, wanting to make sure that the scale was appropriate. The density would stay the same, as is true in the multifamily overlay, two-point-five units per acre. But what was also key was, because this is one of the concerns that was really debated at that time, if we allow residential uses in this district, isn't that just going to gobble up the available land? We won't get commercial development, we won't get the tax base. So one of the things that was integrated into this is, you probably can't see it, but point five, or number five on here, was that if you were gonna do one of these developments, you had to have at least a hundred square feet of commercial space per residential unit. So there was a minimum amount that had to be included. Hundred is not a magic number, but that's what was zoomed in on at the time. There was, you know, some other key things, and again, we're gonna go through some of these developments, but there's a lot of debate around that, but at least twenty percent internal green space. And there was also a requirement, again, kind of going to this concern about tax base, that there had to be a fiscal impact study. It had to show that it would have a net positive fiscal impact to the town. So that was really the concept. Originally, when we were looking at the changes to the northern commercial zone, this was included, but when it really came down to the wire, there was just a sense of, we really need to think about this more. So the rest of the changes to the northern commercial district went forward, this piece did not go forward. So there was some interest in, is this something that we want to revisit? And so it's in your packet today, it's absolutely something we could do. Would I say, I guess I could say it's kind of ready to go, but obviously, we might have different thoughts as to what it might look like. So then, related to that, kind of going back to our packet here, is kind of some of the thinking that was underlying this concept. And of course, we have a tiny screen, so hopefully I can blow this up. So again, this was, and this is not the be-all, end-all necessarily, but the planning board member who was really interested in this concept did a lot of time researching it and kind of came up with this as a really good, this is from a particular community in Maryland, but this was a particularly good demonstration of what a mixed-use, you know, village district is and what its key components are. And if this was something that we were to move forward with, part of those would be embodied in an ordinance. A lot of them are design-oriented and so those would be things that would be more appropriate in our regulations. So everything that you see here wouldn't necessarily be. But there are some significant differences here than in the types of developments that we've typically seen, the residential developments, multifamily residential developments that we've seen as well as commercial developments. We kind of have our first almost mixed-use development, I guess I would say, you know, in Boulder Creek, the Dairy Road site. It's not based on these types of concepts, it's a mixture of uses, which is kind of something else. But, and I realize that this is really, really hard to see, maybe I'll just try to blow it up just a little bit more. But there are some key, you know, features here that are just kind of worth thinking about if we were to want to construct a new ordinance or some regulations. The first is obviously the mix of uses. Needless to say, mixed use is at the essence of, you know, something like this and making sure that the uses make sense and are compatible. Making sure that it is a walkable community, a walkable streetscape that's central to this concept. Again, this is just one concept, but this was a concept that was really zoomed in on. Another key feature is central open space. This is really not something we see. In most of the developments that we see, whether they're open space developments or they're multifamily developments, there is open space. It's not designed to be central. And so that's a key feature of this concept is having those kind of central spaces. A lot of thought around that, obviously aesthetically, it's more similar to your traditional New England community, but you see a lot more of this nowadays in planners speak, but you know, these are gathering places for communities, you know, community building environments. Interconnected streets and sidewalks, so that's another key feature. How do you lay the streets out? The idea, obviously, the idea being the streets connect, the sidewalks connect. And there's gonna be some examples of those. When you look through this, and I don't know if you had a chance to look through it, you know, these architectural examples are not necessarily New England examples, right? If we were gonna look at something like this, we would come up with a kind of our own concepts and our own ideas of design. But when the, this community put this together, they did look around at examples like we're doing right now in other communities. And so again, I'm not gonna go through a lot of those details, what I'm gonna try to zoom in on is, although they're worth looking at, you know, individually, kind of again, what are the benefits? I'm not gonna go through a whole lot of those either. There are very, very few examples, by the way, of this kind of thing in our region, really anywhere around here. Oh, great, I'm freezing again. I should try not to move too quickly. I think I'm good. No, I'm not good. All right, it'll come. I want to get down to some. There we go. All right, these are just kind of, what do we look like now? Nice pictures of historic buildings. That's very much what we would do and what they did is look at kind of what are the traditional types of, you know, architecture that they saw in their region? Some of these wouldn't be incompatible, but they kind of showed different examples of what they're looking for. And I should add that a, when you look at mixed use, at least in this concept, the concept isn't, there's a strip mall out by the road and there's apartments behind it, it's really an integration and that can include mixed-use buildings within the development itself. A mixture of housing types is usually considered desirable in these types of developments as well. That's something we don't contemplate. Right now, we do have the mixed-use overlay, I'm sorry, the multifamily overlay, that doesn't allow for a combination of, say, single-family and multifamily within the same development. So what we tend to see is it's either a single-family development or it's all townhouses. There's, or, you know, I suppose you could say garden-style, we don't see a lot of garden style. So this would be one example. This is denser than we would see in Litchfield with a two-point-five per acre. So look at it knowing that this is denser than anything that we would see, but you kind of get the concept. You've got different types of buildings. So in your, probably if I zoom down to actually to the next one, I think there's little arrows. So you've got a combination of what they're calling apartments, multifamily, those would be your garden-style developments. They're using the term twins, that's what we would call a two-family or a duplex, and then you've got single-family. They're all integrated into the same development. These buildings that show apartments also include either mixed-use or commercial buildings within them, and you can see there's parking lots that are associated with those. They're giving you figures, we don't necessarily need to see. Again, yeah, you see the non-residential lots that are flagged in that area. Of course, I'm freezing again. La, 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 la. And I think it'll get pointed out in a later slide, but since I'm here, you can kind of see also the way it's laid out very clearly. You can see the central green spaces around which the homes are grouped and oriented and that the streets are all interconnected. And obviously, the sidewalks are all interconnected as well. And then again, just some examples of developments like this where they've kind of had this combination of different types of housing. They get into a lot of their standards. We start to get into a lot of design detail as you get further along in this. Those are good things, right, build streets like this, not like this. Just a lot of this, it's really pretty in-depth. And then we get into some of the examples of the commercial development and what it can look like in terms of design, in terms of scale. There's no magic way to do it necessarily. I mean, it's a huge amount of detail that goes into this. Again, all of this would not be applicable to us. You know, from what I'm gathering, this looks like a community that has sewer. So they are developed, right, they're developing at a higher density. So when you kind of look through something like this, just look at it through the lens of, if this were in Litchfield, it would be, the density would be much lower than what we see here. There would be a much higher proportion of open space, of course. So at any rate, I don't think I need to go through a whole bunch of it, they have model ordinance, that's mostly would not be applicable to us. But that was the thinking. So I guess the question is, is this something that we want to entertain?
And I think that's sort of, this was happening around the time when they started the, the idea of having an economic development committee. And I think the consensus of the board at that time was, we were gonna sort of wait and see what economic development was gonna kind of do. I don't know if the Economic Development Committee, Jeremy, has had discussions about this.
We have. Jay did a big presentation about this at our workshop about two weeks ago, and this really ties in very nicely to what the main flavor, what people seem to actually like was this. So more village versus less big box. So, right. This is a very good tie-in to what we're looking to do, well, the town's scenes are looking to do.
The presentate, like the document from that community over in Maryland or Pennsylvania, they, like they require lower, much shallower setbacks on the buildings to have more of that communal feel, which is not allowed by our zoning right now. And I think they kind of partially make up for that by requiring the central open space because if you did have the central open space and have very low setbacks, you would have just buildings right next to you on both sides of the road. But with the central open space, it's kind of shifting where the open space would be from in front of the houses to in the, in like clusters. Yeah, into communal space rather than one building. But yeah, based on what you're saying from the Economic Development Committee, people want like a community area and we also need it to be commercially viable for anything to actually happen. Like with residential development right next to commercial development, if the commercial development is appealing to the residents at those, in that same cluster, that can create some level of demand, which will get, which, that will help make it a used spot where people will come from other parts of town potentially. Because like, I've definitely seen that there's some turnover at like the restaurants, for example, in the northern commercial district. Like the pizza shop that was there, not Romano's, but the ones in that other small building, definitely changed ownership very frequently. And the only really successful one long-term has been Romano's and probably the convenience store. So. Yeah, I wonder if we'd want to entertain any of the lower setbacks with the, given the requirement of very close by open space.
Yeah, tying to this would be a nice thing to add, I think.
Yeah, because open, the open space here is just, oh, it's the woods next to the development. It doesn't add anything except for, it doesn't add anything to the development. It adds something to protecting the wildlife, but that's a separate concern from the development itself.
A lot of the concerns by the people that came to the Economic Development Committee was, say we want a coffee shop, well, if there's no one that supports said coffee shop, people will be gone like you're saying right now. But with this kind of development around said coffee shop, this moves all the small businesses and now homes there, their foot traffic will be far higher and more likely to succeed.
Yeah, and that part of Albuquerque is like probably the highest traffic spot on Albuquerque, where it is in the northern commercial district. There would definitely be demand for like a coffee shop if it's proposed there. So.
That's just one example, but that's kind of the flavor that Jay and I were getting that other day.
Definitely, that was the flavor. Coffee shop, restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if we regulate it so that certain uses that are, that complement residential development are allowed, that would, I think, be preferred over just residential by the community.
Yeah. The mix of uses that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then if we have the fiscal positive impact requirement, that definitely would be a great sell based on the committee's findings so far.
And it was one of the reasons why it was characterized as a conditional use because whether or not to do it is so integrated with the development itself, its components, its design.
So that would basically give us a little, give the board a little more discretion on how it's implemented, right?
Right.
So then, another question is like, do we want to also regulate which parts are developed in which order? Because there have been examples in Merrimack, for example, where they would just develop all the residential part, and they're like, ah, no one wants any of the commercial, so we haven't built it yet. And therefore, the requirement, like, obviously, the traffic or the economic study that is required in that draft of the regulations assumes that it's all built. So.
Right. Yeah, and I think probably putting language in there about a phasing plan that would have to be approved would make sense.
Yeah, can I carry the same percentages through the whole phasing plan?
Yeah, or at this junction, you're, whatever it makes sense.
Kind of commercial.
Exactly, you're at the fifty percent mark.
So when you talked earlier about a net positive impact, do you just mean at build-out one stabilized or do you mean in every year, basically?
I think the intent was they had to demonstrate that at build-out, it would be a net positive. Once it's built, it's built, so there's not much you can do at that point.
When it's built and set about a town, there should be a net positive going forward.
Right, but I would imagine that if you're doing it, it wouldn't, it probably wouldn't be a great comfort level if it were a dollar, right? It would have to be enough where you feel that there's a margin, because we know property values fluctuate.
A lot of the, these types of lots are probably under current use right now, so the amount of income to the town is probably less, less than a standard homes, for example.
But so is the burden.
But so is the burden.
Yes. So the burden would have to be calculated, obviously, in that study, which would probably be mainly based on road totals, the total amount of road.
As schools, municipal services.
Would you dictate the percentage of commercial property that would be in there?
Yes, there'd be a minimum, yes.
And the minimum was like 100?
Is it 100 square feet per year?
100 square feet per year.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you said that, yeah.
Basically, we don't have to go with that.
Exactly, we don't have to go with that. That was kind of what was.
A starting point.
Yeah, we can do our own study based on whatever Jay can figure out for actual building size and whatever else.
Right, and what do we think is realistic?
Right, what fits our needs here.
Right, and we could think about that with some of the developments that we've had. Because why, you know, I think if I'm, you know, we're looking at Corning Farm, that's what, 58, 60 units?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that, so, so now you're looking, you know, 6,000, 500 square feet. Does that make sense in a Litchfield context? Yeah, probably.
Yeah, small shops, only a few thousand square feet per shop.
Right, that's, you know, we, yeah, I mean, that is probably a Dunkin' Donuts plus.
Two to four thousand feet is all you need for most of the small shops.
Right, so that's a couple of units, a bigger development. You know, obviously, the larger you get, the more you're gonna have. Something like, you know, a Rose Meadows with 172, that would be a much more substantial commercial development. That might be more than one building. You know, that's easier to phase in a development that you already know is gonna be phased. How that, what that looks like is a little bit, that's probably, but again, that's not a magic number. It was kind of in that thinking of what, what size commercial buildings and units make sense. I think at that time, we also, we adopted a maximum of 10,000 square feet for the building size. So, you know, for a commercial building, that's kind of the thinking.
And does, would it allow one building with harsh, part residential use, part commercial use?
Yeah, you could do it. You know, we'll obviously look at the regulations to make sure that that's encouraged. But mixed use within the same building, I think would be something that we would want, if that's possible.
Yeah, speaking of regulations, Jay, how much effort is all this to implement into zoning?
So, I would say it's worth probably looking at this and then looking at the language of what was adopted. Because I do think a lot of effort already went into putting together a language. So everything isn't in the zoning language, because I think there's an assumption that there would be a, you know, a parallel effort to update the regulations with the design guidelines, you know, that would be in them. And that's just because, I think, as you could appreciate, you start to get, when you go through the rest of this, you start to get very, very detailed in terms of design. You don't want that in zoning. So, but I'm sure, I haven't looked at this in a, you know, in a while. I'm sure that there are probably things that we would want to modify in that draft language. But that, but we have a starting point already, so.
Just to qualify the setbacks and that kind of stuff to make sure we can qualify this to actually have a look like this in our town, which currently wouldn't be unbuildable.
Right.
So are you looking at spot zoning or are you looking at planned unit development in these one, these distinct areas or?
Yes.
Because.
This was designed as a conditional use within the Northern Commercial Zone. So it'd be limited to just that zoning district. And it would be allowed anywhere. I think the criteria was the site had to be less than five acres. So, because at a certain point, it doesn't make sense anymore to try to do these things. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but I recall that we, we looked at the zoning map to figure out that it's not that many parcels realistically that are developable, that have more than, by themselves, that have five acres or more. It's, it's, there are, but it's not a huge number.
Yeah, realistically, this is probably just the area across from the golf course on Albuquerque and near St. Francis Church.
And, and the very northern end of town, across from Park Creek.
That, yeah. Yeah, there's, the gas station was.
No, above that, north of that.
Was intended there, but what's happening with that?
Don't know.
He's still on DOT help.
I think he's, he was trying to negotiate with DOT, I think.
So these were the vacant sites that were, the vacant developable sites that were developed, you know, identified at that time. Again, this is, this one down here is under development now. But these are pretty large sites. So they, they could support a significant amount of development. You know, and of course, there's also some thought that some other sites, including some large ones, might not be developed, you know, in the future, they might be redeveloped. And that's just something else to think about. We never know. So, it's, I think it gives an idea, and realistically, it wouldn't be difficult to look at a back of the envelope, right? If these are the sites, what could you realistically expect if you had a density of 2.5 per unit? We can pretty quickly do the math and see what, what that would mean in terms of commercial development, what that would mean in terms of residential units, recognizing that we're not gonna engineer them and that there's gonna be subtracting for this and that. But it would give us a really good sense of what would be possible.
Some of those ones that back up to the river, rest of natural beauty just by themselves.
Absolutely.
You know, that'd be a great spot to have some of this, probably has a breeze off the river, all that kind of stuff. So it'd be a really cool area.
Yeah. It's the same density as the overlay district?
That's, yes, we use the same density as the overlay district, so it's not an increase.
Which means it is, it is financially good for the developers because they can then add on commercial with the density of residential being fixed, right?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
So, yeah, that is probably pretty good for a developer.
Yeah, I do, I would think it'd be advantageous. Granted, some might have concerns about the viability of the commercial space. So that's certainly something that you could see, a concern, I don't want to build it and struggle to rent the space. So that will be, that's the reason why you saw the, you know, you've seen the issues in Merrimack is because they've struggled to find tenants in some cases for the commercial space.
The lack of sewer is gonna be an issue too.
Here it is, so it's, it's, that's also kind of why we wanted to keep it a smaller requirement so that you're not being unrealistic.
Sure. Keep our density manageable for all we can do, so.
Exactly. You know, so could you support, you know, a personal care type of business? And, you know, who knows what else? It might be a tax office, it might be a coffee shop, those kinds of smaller things.
And how, how much wastewater treatment would be required for commercial development versus residential?
Really, really depends on the type of development. You know, a restaurant, which is possible, but a restaurant does have a higher, you know, water demand. You know, a personal care office, you know, probably not so much. So it's gonna, you know, it's gonna vary depending on the use. But obviously, that's one of the things we're gonna have to look at is can they, can they support it? Most of these you can. It's only, it's when you start to get into a really large, you know, more intensive use that is also kind of realistically, when you're looking at the restaurants, it's, it's not going to be, you know, a Texas Roadhouse, probably, right?
Not gonna have that level of turnover.
Right, it's going to be realistically something a little bit smaller that you probably could do a one-site septic and, and that would work.
And already, the developers need to pay for a study for the subsurface waste disposal. And like, yeah, with single family, they're definitely pretty far from the capabilities of the land theoretically. And with the 2.5, it's a little closer, but there's probably still room there if the conditions are good.
Right, and it's, you know, again, I haven't looked at this in a while, but I think among the changes I think that are, that would really differ from the overlay that we have now is that it does explicitly allow a mix of single family, two-family, multifamily within the same development in addition to that commercial use.
Would we want to allow that mixed use in other places where we currently support multifamily? Or would we want this to only be used in the villages?
And it's something that, at the time, we just said the Northern Commercial Zone. There's no reason why it has to be limited to the Northern Commercial Zone. It could just as easily, it could include the highway commercial.
On Dairy Row.
It could, it could just apply to the multifamily overlay, which would have the effect of allowing a wider range of non-residential uses outside of the commercial zones. Which is interestingly something that we talked about at the Economic Development Committee.
I think something on the books to have this functional somewhere, at least a trial area would be great. See how it actually does, you know? Until we build this, we'll have no idea how it actually survives.
Right.
Was there any discussion amongst the Economic Development Committee about anything to do with agro-terrorism or anything like that?
Yep. Yep, you wanna see it?
Very much about that, actually, Mike. Everyone wants farm stands and all that stuff to come back.
So if you want, I'll just run through this. This was the presentation that was done. I'm gonna qualify this by saying that I threw it together faster than I would have liked. So there were some examples that I would have loved to have shown, but I just didn't have a picture of. So at any rate, so, so the way this worked is, I'm not gonna run through the survey, but I think everybody's aware that there was a survey that was done. It was really amazingly comprehensive and the response was just fantastic. So the structure to this was, in fact, it was one of the best responses I've ever seen. You know, over 1,100 people responding to a survey in a town of this size is astonishing. But putting that aside, so without, this didn't go through all the questions, but basically what we asked is, what we focused on is, you know, are you in favor of economic development? And a pretty good, I mean, you're, you're looking at 67%, 68% saying they support it, either strongly or support it. Do they want to see new businesses? Interestingly, it was over 82% said they want to see new businesses. So far more than, so they support economic development, probably because of uncertainty as to what the term means. But you'll see that when people say they want to see new businesses, they're pretty specific to what those are. And overwhelmingly, people want a farmer's market, people want a coffee shop, they want more restaurants, they want a bakery, they want a microbrewery or winery. They want the kinds of things that I think people find to be attractive and appealing. They see them not just as economic development, but they see them as amenities and they see them as places where people can gather. Those themes, those are, at least were my takeaways. So what we did is we tried to go through, okay, the, this was the, the way the focus group ran was these are examples of all of these different types of things. Is this something that you think would fit in Litchfield? And if so, where? So that was kind of the structure. And then we just went and, you know, found some images in different farmer's markets.
And for instance, with this stuff here with big enough open space and this new development, that's a great use of the ground, don't we?
That's exactly right. I think this was in Littleton, this was Nashua, yeah, that's Milford. Yeah, that one was Milford, this is Nashua. Everything we looked at, by the way, wasn't, so this kind of went in order of what people's top preferences were. And everything was not necessarily saying, this is a great example. We were saying, this is an example. Is this what you mean? Is this what you want to see? So is this what people want to see? And, and actually, in some people's views, yes, in the right part of town. So that is an example of a coffee shop. That's another way that same coffee shop can look. And that's another way a coffee shop can look. I can't remember which town this was in. So you've got your kind of more historic image. People wanted to see wineries and breweries, so we threw in some of these images. Is this something you could imagine being somewhere in Litchfield? Obviously, it's got that large rural barn look. I think that concept has come up. This is La Belle Brewery and Dairy. Again, it's got that barn look to it. I think people like that, very rural. This is kind of a aerial view of La Belle Winery in Amherst. Larger, a little bit more intensive, so not quite as the theme rural feel. Definitely popular. And then we started to look at some different examples of restaurants. And I believe this is Picketty Place in Mason. One of the themes that really came out is, is what works in smaller communities. And so we did look at some examples of really things that seem to work in very rural communities. Mason is a tiny town and it has a destination restaurant. In fact, it has two. And that was just kind of another example of this, something that people think could fit in Litchfield somewhere. And yeah, right, it's obviously, it's got the rural look. Once again, it's a destination, people are willing to travel for something like this.
Yeah, and that's not something that would really belong in the commercial zoning, zoned areas very much.
Yeah, and.
That would be like a 3A type of business.
And I will say, I think there, there's one particular site that a lot of people have zoomed in on that seems to be underutilized, where a couple of these different things we've shown would fit. But some, you know, but you can do these things through new construction. So this is an example of, you know, new construction. Actually, I think there's an older building attached to this complex, but gee, this is a little bit of a bigger scale. Could something like this work in Litchfield? Kind of got the look and feel, little more contemporary, little larger scale than what we've seen. And then this, this is actually a bakery. Obviously, this is a reuse of a historic home. We did show examples like that because not surprising, you know, obviously, Litchfield has some historic homes in areas where, gee, maybe these kinds of things could make sense. And then, of course, this is a bakery, coffee shop that is obviously actually not very large, but very, very modern. Does that work? Do people think this is compatible with Litchfield somewhere, anywhere? As some people commented at that time, well, maybe one or two. Bedford Village Inn, it's another example, very, very popular destination. It actually, I didn't, I'm not showing, you know, real historic house park. It's, this is, it's a large complex, there is a historic house. There is this, you know, obviously very new, but again, still architecturally, could be, right? Bigger scale, once again, is that something that could fit somewhere? This is an example of a bed and breakfast. I forgot the town. Obviously, again, historic home conversion, does that work? And then we decided to look at some other things. I don't know what day this was taken, but this is the Little Shopping Center in the heart of House. It was originally a grocery store, was the prime tenant of this. Now it is one of the Buckley Group Cafe. And it's, it's always been mult, you know, mixed use. Not a great shot, you're looking at a lot of surface parking lot here, but if you look at the scale of the building, you know, could that fit into one of those village mixed use types of developments somewhere? This is actually Merrimack, it's just a CVS. Merrimack adopted a town center district several years ago, trying to get a sense of having a town center. And so they did adopt some design guidelines and this CVS was built under those design guidelines. Might not be the be-all, end-all of what anybody would want to see. But it did follow their guidelines, as you can see. It wasn't a flat roof, kind of one-story looking, odd. Again, there's this, this is generic, small, you know, I'd say strip mall, but it doesn't even make it to strip mall, but that's built as probably a four-tenant, you know, type of little commercial building. And kind of once again, does that little building like that fit somewhere? Showing examples of things that are just never gonna happen in Litchfield didn't make sense. So again, a little more contemporary looking, less contemporary looking. And this is an example of something that was designed as part of a mixed-use development. So pretty clearly, there's, well, I guess it could be false upper stories, but this, the concept here is there is residential above, there is retail below. And then we got into mixed use and we showed some examples of what some mixed-use concepts might look like in a more rural environment. This is. This is, you know, overwhelmingly residential, but you could see there is a mix of kind of, what I would call garden style, but designed in a, you know, more traditional way. Buildings right up front, a mixed-use building with what looks like a bakery, some townhouses, and then we get to single-family. So it's very, very much that same concept. These you can't see very well, but these are some other kind of concepts of mixed-use, larger scale, a little bit more urban. And then finally, we got into some of the things that we have actually been seeing a little of. So we talked a little bit about potential industrial uses. What is a kind of an industrial commercial building that might fit somewhere in Litchfield? So this is an example of a contractor type of building. I think as we've seen, we have had a couple of these types of buildings proposed. In fact, in the northern commercial zone, very, very recently. So that was just an example of what those might look like. And then we got into, okay, if we were to see larger-scale industrial development, what might that look like? And the reason these examples were shown is, we don't have to get into this today, but one of the conversations that we've been having is, we have this industrially-zoned land that has not done anything in many, many years. What, what should become of that? That might be more than we wanna bite off, I would have to think, in this time period. But it is something to be thinking about longer term. Is industrial development in that area realistic? And if so, what does that look like? And this was just an example of a larger industrial type of development. This is actually the Sagamore Business Park in Hudson. Is that a vision that works anywhere in Litchfield? And that was it. So I may think if there's interest and people wanna review it, we could certainly take a look at these and see, you know, does this make sense to try to look at? Are there changes or tweaks that we might wanna make? We've got some time to think about. So typically, the way we work is, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I wanna say, the deadline for posting for first public hearing, I think is, you know, gonna be the first or early second week of January. Typically, so mid-January, you've got your first public hearing. Then you have a gap of about two weeks before you hold your second public hearing. So typically, the board has voted on what they wanna send to public hearing in January, in December. And so usually, that means we wanna have a very, very good idea of what that, those drafts look like in November, so that we can make a decision in December to what to send to first public hearing. Sending it to first public hearing doesn't mean you're voting to put it on the ballot. So you will still have a stab at, do we send it to second public hearing? And even at that point, you can still say to what we wanna vote to send it to the ballot or not. So there is some time, but I think if we wanted to do something like this, we would wanna decide pretty much now, let's work on it so that we can come back to a work session in November with something, we can still edit, we can still change, but something that we feel comfortable enough to, to keep moving forward.
And Jeremy, where is economic development committee now in terms of, I know you've had your focus session?
Yeah, so that was our last meeting. We were supposed to have on last Wednesday and it became canceled, so.
What's the next step for you guys?
So we're gonna fine-tune, probably do one more focus group and then turn our findings over to the board of selectmen. But like I said, this is kind of where we're trending right now from all avenues. I think this general idea meets everyone's requirements for the most part. This doesn't quite dive into the revitalization of the farm, the agricultural land we have in town, but this is a step in the right direction, so.
Yeah, and that might be, again, more than we wanna bite off this year, but a lot of the thinking then was, are there, is there a limited range of non-residential uses that could be allowed on 3A outside of a commercial district through some mechanism?
Right.
But that's.
I think this is a good starting point first for right now. Get, get this done in a way that we can work for our town and then we can adjust it for other areas if need be. And if the want is there.
Right.
And I wonder if there would be any desire to consider a village-type multi-use in what is currently the southern industrial area and commercial.
It is a real question mark. That was debated back in those, at that time too. There was a concern that if you opened up that area to residential development, that it would become developed.
Right. But they're also banking on the highway going in, so obviously that's not happening.
Right.
Now.
But there's definite, there's definitely folks out there who don't wanna see that southern commercial area developed. For sure. So it's something we could talk about, but that's definitely, that was a sentiment at that time of not touching that zone.
But this option might satisfy people to let that be developed somewhat. So some, some kind of mixed use.
Like what type of businesses would make sense down there? Because it doesn't have the greatest access.
The, the red area of the southern commercial zone?
Mainly, yeah.
That's a very tough area to develop commercially and that's why it hasn't developed. Realistically, it's farmland for a reason.
Like, is it our job to keep it overly restrictively zoned so that it stays undeveloped?
Not necessarily.
So what should we do?
Well, that is the question.
That's a question. Yeah. The same question is for the industrial area across the street that's shown in that kind of odd purple dotted. That also hasn't developed.
Right.
And then we also have the question of the circumferential highway right-of-way that I think it's reasonable to assume is gonna become surplus soon. And what does that look like?
I think that would be a great spot for a village development.
It absolutely could.
Between 3A and Dairy Road.
It, it absolutely could be. And we, and we do need to give some real thought to, all, in all the years when it was locked up as right-of-way, it didn't matter. But now that it looks like that day may be coming sooner, we should be thinking about it.
Right, so if we can get this to work in the northern zone, we'd have a great basis to develop the southern zone. If we can get that land.
Yeah, I think, yeah, talking about, has there been any discussions on the southern zones specifically in the economic development?
Not, not, no locations themselves were specified yet. All the ideas, we were kind of figuring out what we wanted, not so much where it was gonna go yet. That, that was kind of our next session. But I said, a lot of trying to reuse the current agricultural land has been the most common comment that we've had. But that doesn't really work for this section here quite yet.
And how do you do it in a way that keeps it agricultural? Because there's no question that people really value that in Litchfield. So how do we strike that balance, I think, is.
You know, we had the farm-to-table stuff pop up. I think I threw it at like a wedding venue. You have tons of open green space for that. You kind of still have the same kind of look. You do like a La Belle kind of thing there, would fit in perfectly and not have obscene usage. So I think the town would get behind something like that in general. We just get to get a developer to get behind that.
Right.
And do their task, so.
Yeah, would, is it possible to allow a certain usage like, like a farm restaurant? And then have it so that they have to set aside a good chunk of the land as open space for farmland or conservation?
Yes, by requiring that link. So some of the examples that we showed are actually agricultural. You know, Picketty Place is, they actually grow stuff, you know, on that property. So it, it takes some thought to construct that language, but we could certainly construct it. And I'm sure we could do some research and find places where that link is there. Looking at something like La Belle Winery, they are growing grapes, you know, on that site. Is most of their product coming from there? Maybe not. But, you know, those kinds of links. And there's also examples in farm stand requirements. You know, a quality of farm stand under state law, there's a percentage of your product that has to be grown, you know, by the, the owners, by the farmer, not necessarily on the exact same parcel. So there's language like that I'm sure we could look at to come up with kind of what are the conditions? I think if we were to do something like that, it would be a limited range of uses that there's buy-in that, you know, I think people could support. And then, right, under what conditions? You know, could those be supported?
Make the conditions all based on percentages, so even smaller lots could still have a chance of doing it.
And clearly, appearance is gonna be huge. You know, reusing existing, you know, historic buildings, barns, et cetera, I think is important. How do you construct your language around that? And new construction, making sure it's compatible. So it's, yeah, it's a lot of those things that we would have to think through and construct something that made sense.
And have it still meet current building code requirements for, you know, resident, that are a site for commercial uses. So, which, no farm else is gonna meet most of that stuff, so.
It's a toughie.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think timeline-wise, the mixed use in the northern commercial makes sense for this year for vote in the March vote, March town meeting for early next year. And then for the 3A and southern commercial stuff, probably makes sense when the economic development committee has fully concluded and published the results. And is there any, do you have any guess on when this, when the land that was for the bridge?
The circumferential?
Circumferential would likely be marked surplus and released?
No, but I think it's coming fairly soon with, and really the trigger is that they pulled the circumferential in Hudson out of the tenure plan. And I think that's caused thought to be, let's put this to bed. But declaring that land surplus is a process, so it's not gonna happen tomorrow. It will take several.
Kim's already working on this too, so she's heavily on this for the town.
It's gonna, it's not gonna happen next year. It's gonna take, you know, I would expect it'll be a few years. But we wanna, I think, be ready with a concept of what it is we wanna see happen there and what makes sense zoning-wise. Because right now, it's zoned highway commercial through most of it. And then the balance is the southern commercial district. So how much sense that makes, you know, it's hard to say. It didn't matter at the time.
But if we have a time and a plan together in advance of this, we can roll this out right in, as soon as we get the land rolled right into it.
Exactly. So if that's something that we want, you know, we work on next year and, you know, kind of focus on the southern area, that would give us certainly time, I think, to get ahead of it.
Yeah, looking at the map, the prior subdivisions, so it looks like there's a, there's the right-of-way at the, at the tree farm. There's another land, bit of land south of the trailer park.
Yes.
So there's two possible routes that can be taken there.
Yes.
It has to go around the trailer park, so it's, it's pretty narrow there. So there's not much that can be done there. And then it opens up with the only problems being some wetlands, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely some wetlands.
There's definitely wetlands. That's in fact why that northern piece was killed ultimately, was because of the weather impacts. Not just in Litchfield, but in Hudson as well.
Yeah, so that would limit development.
Yes.
And I believe one chunk of it is in the industrial section in the lighter color.
Yes.
Which is owned differently also.
And that right-of-way was called Industrial Drive.
Yeah. Something I know of.
Yeah, just a little. But there was a plan. There was a concept.
Tree Farm Drive.
Tree Farm Drive.
What's the full name? Barbecue Avenue.
So if that makes sense, you know, everybody could have a chance to take a look at this stuff. I'll take a look at it too, maybe suggest a few tweaks. And also maybe try to come up with some examples. Because if we were to move this forward, we would wanna be able to show some images of what we're thinking that are a little more, you know, New England and a little closer to home than Maryland.
Right. If you need help doing the math to figure out what sizes work best, whether it are numbers and more than what we can help out, or if you have plenty of time, go for it.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, there's, we know what the properties are, so.
Yeah.
And if we can find some examples in this state
Yeah.
from other communities.
It's not easy.
Not easy, but.
It's not easy because, yeah, most of the examples of mixed use that we see are much more urban. So finding that kind of rural.
This would be a little bit, yeah.
I'm sure we'll chase them down in Vermont though.
Yeah, that, that's probably the best place to look.
Yeah, exactly.
How would we determine, like, what setbacks to use? Because currently, that's just the standard setbacks. But the villages would probably benefit from the option, at least of having lower setbacks with more central open space.
So that's. It's because that, that's something to think about on whether that's here or in the design guidelines. We'd have to give that a little bit of thought as to probably, you know, I don't know if you want a minimum, but you probably want a maximum. And there are communities that do that, just have a maximum setback. In some of these cases, I, I suspect in most of these cases, what you're gonna see is not, they're, the units are not gonna be in individual lots, most likely. It's most likely gonna be a condominium or rental development. And so they wouldn't, there wouldn't be setbacks in the same sense as a zoning from the front line. So we'd probably have to think about including a setback if it were developed as individual lots that makes sense, and maximum, minimum. And then we would probably want in our design guidelines, a require, a say maximum setback. Even though it won't be the front line, probably from the road or however we wanna define it, yeah. So that's something we would think about. Fortunately, with the design guidelines, we have a little bit more time, a little.
What would the process be for that?
So those would be amending the planning board site plan regulations. And what we would likely do is, we would, under the design guidelines that we already have, we would probably have a subsection that would be design guidelines for mixed-use village development. And there would be, I mean, a lot of the elements that we have in our design guidelines probably make sense still because we have a lot in there already about, you know, window and door openings and roof lines. And, you know, that kind of language is already in our guidelines, which is, could be better maybe, but pretty good. We wanted to think about what else would we wanna see? And I'm sure we would. We would wanna talk about scale and massing. And we would wanna talk about exactly those kinds of things. We would wanna look at, you know, orientation of buildings and green space and also parking. If you've probably noticed in these developments, you know, parking is not the main design feature.
Yeah, the, the document mentioned parking should be on the side or back.
Exactly.
So that you get people coming into the.
Well, right, we can also avoid parking lots by having on-street parking too. So you have, you have the house sidewalk on-street, then the road, then open space.
Exactly.
So it's, it keeps speeds down because people aren't speeding around sidewalks with cars. And it make it so it's just more flexible as far as the space in general.
Exactly.
So those personal driveways.
And you don't want your basic home design to be a garage with the house behind it.
Which is happening a lot now.
It's happening a lot now. It's, it's true.
Very compact design, so.
Yeah, with, with the late, the open space developments that we have now, the, they're able to have smaller lots, which is probably contributing to the garage with the house behind it type of style. But it's not so narrow as like the example in that, that document was so, really showed the point.
Yeah.
It was crazy.
So I'll, I'll take a stab at something, you know, and then we can have another November workshop.
Sure.
And I think.
Speaking of November, do you want to go with the 12th and the 19th because the 5th is election day?
Yeah, obviously.
And then you don't wanna go in the week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, no.
No.
So either 12th or 19th?
Well, the 19th is already a meeting, so I'll be shifting the 5th to the 12th, right?
Right.
Okay, so the 12th of November?
Okay, it's a bad week.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna meet on election day.
No, no. We have enough to think about.
We do the 12th, there's a conflict in this room with Rec Commission, so we wanna be aware of, uh, who's already booked the room.
Is the fire system open?
I don't see that it's not, but I don't have access to that calendar.
So, or maybe we can cut it to- Okay, well, we've got a screen in there, though, I think, that we can do see-
Two, three screens.
Yeah, we can, so, you know, we can make that room work.
Sure.
I'll check, see if it's available.
Well, let's hope it's available.
Is there one of those dates that would be better for a workshop than the other?
If you have anything up that far?
Both are empty right now.
Empty, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, maybe we could go the first one, maybe we could do the 12th?
Okay.
As a workshop?
Sure.
And if we're good there, I do have just a couple of other things.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move November. Yeah, I mean, this is enough, really, but, um, the only other thing I wanted to, so there's a couple of things that happened, uh, in terms of changes in state law at the last legislative session, I'll just pass this out. This is really, really easy, so they changed the definition of a butter. So we should change the definition of a butter in our ordinance, and we should change it in our regulations as well. Just pass it down. I don't really wanna, uh, there's not a lot to talk about here. The biggie is they've changed what it means to be, uh, a street or street, and how you calculate that, and I don't even wanna bother calculating the projected points and whatever. I know, it's, I don't know.
Way too much time on their hands.
I'm sure, as is so often the case, is there are, there's an issue somewhere in a community, and it results in a legislative change. Uh, maybe two communities, cause this was probably done through the committee process. The second one is simply that every tenant in a mobile home park has to be notified. Uh, previously, it would be just the owner of the site if it was, um, a rental.
So even ones that, if they own their own land, which is not, not very common, but even if they own their own land, they're all, cause typically it's community land, so.
Right, so now every tenant has to be individually notified.
Right, which makes sense.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, when there's a development that's actually separate land lots, that are owned by individuals, does that still apply?
Well, it says, under a manufactured housing park form of ownership as defined in RSA, so, yeah. I took this to mean that there, that, that there are, they're leasing their lots.
Well, that's, that's a particular interest for mobile homes, yeah.
So every tenant that leases a lot-
Every tenant.
And if it is subdivided, which is not-
No, every tenant would.
Yeah, and if, if it was subdivided instead, um, it would have, it would, everything within fifty feet of any projected point.
Right, and, uh, because in that case, it'd be considered a mobile, uh, or a manufactured housing subdivision, not park.
Yeah.
So at any rate, those are the changes, we should just adopt them. Two other changes that I was going to mention, but I won't today, um, really talk, get into it, is parking. Uh, we need to look at our parking, it's a site plan issue, not a zoning issue, so it's less, a couple of years ago, we took a real comprehensive look at the parking, but that didn't move forward. But there are a couple of changes that, oh, well, I'll back up on one more zoning change, I'm sorry. Manufactured housing parks, there is a change in the statute that requires that we, without any definitions, what it means, uh, that we have to allow for reasonable and realistic opportunity for existing manufactured housing parks to expand. So-
We do.
We do and we don't, because most of them are non-conforming. They're located outside of a zoning district that permits them, so we did allow, um, the expansion of osons, but they did have to get a variance because it wasn't a permitted use, so I don't know that we have to really jump into that now, but as we're thinking about, they're all in the southern part of town, as we're thinking about the southern part of town, one of the things to think about is that realistic opportunity, and I do just note that some of that circumferential land we talked about, abuts, you know, osons, so it's something to think about, I don't think we have to jump on it now. The other change, uh, which again affects our parking standards, is now if you have studio or one-bedroom apartments that are part of a workforce housing development, you can't require more than 1.5 spaces per unit, or if you are in a multifamily development of any type of ten units or more, you can't require more than 1.5 spaces per unit. We currently require two per unit, so we will also wanna look at that.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of other things, you're gonna see this come up, um, later, but some of our parking requirements for multifamily are really weird. Um, twelve-foot-wide parking spa, it's the only place where we dictate the width of a parking space, or the dimensions of a parking space is under multifamily, and it's 12 by 18. We don't actually do that, so it's weird. And we also apparently require that if you have a garage, it has to be 24 feet wide, which is, again, why? Um, nobody does that. So, anyway, that's a side note, we wanna look at our parking, that's a separate meeting.
Would that be an agenda item on one of our upcoming workshops?
I, I would say yes, um, we might just wanna focus our next one on zoning, but we could. I'll go ahead and send out some information on that, um, you know, just tangentially, um, not to get into it too much, but, um, one of the reasons we looked at our parking initially is if you ever take into answer our parking standards, they're, the list is very, very long. We provide a specific parking requirement for a very long list of different uses, and why some of those uses have different parking requirements, who knows? Um, where it really comes, becomes challenging is in a multi-tenant site where you have turnover of tenants, and it can significantly change your parking requirement. Um, so that's challenging, and the cumulative impact, this has come up a couple of times. The cumulative parking requirements, if you add up every individual use, can be pretty excessive over what a site actually needs. So what we looked at doing a couple of years ago is maybe trying to group some of these uses into like categories, and give them the same parking requirement, and then also provide a mechanism for mixed-use sites. And the other, this is one other change I wish I'll bring up, and then I'll shut up. Um, there's another change in parking that also came out of the last legislative session, which requires that for multifamily development, we allow for an alternate parking plan. In essence, what that means is, um, it would allow, um, a multifamily development to meet their minimum parking requirements through the use of off-site parking. Essentially, it's a kind of a roundabout way of saying that. It really applies to urban areas where, say, you could lease spaces or take advantage of a public parking facility, and you could use that as part of your requirement, and communities are required to allow you to propose that alternate parking.
Does it dictate distance to alternate parking at all?
It doesn't.
No?
Um, it just says you've gotta allow for an alternate parking plan, so, anyway. Those are all things we should, we should, so, in other words, another workshop on parking is coming.
Okay.
Um, our next workshop, we should probably focus on this, since we've got a clock ticking on this.
Yeah.
And obviously, um, we're gonna need to change the definition of a butter.
That we'll have to do. We've had a couple of things that were suggested to, uh, the ADU, not, you know, getting rid of the condition use-making that by right, that was-
And not duplex to have a, um, a-
Firewall.
Firewall, common wall. We don't allow, we don't do that now.
So we can bring those to the next workshop also, those are simpler.
And there's the septic concerns that, um, that these people had. Um, I don't know, I was looking at plans for other developments in town, and all of them list on the plan, on the plan itself, that the septics must be a hundred feet back from the wetlands. But in our zoning, or at least in the subdivision itself, all we currently have is the, when you do the math for the development, the, um, area that you calculate has to be at least a hundred feet back, but I don't know if we require the septics themselves to actually be-
Is that a DES thing?
Is that the- So, yeah, we, we do require the septic systems to be a hundred feet back. I think the issue was that we weren't requiring the 4,000-square-foot window
Right.
to be a hundred feet back, cause it's certainly something we could look at, too.
Yes, do we wanna pursue that?
Do we wanna pursue that, so that, that's certainly a question. Cause the septic doesn't have to be located within the 4,000-square-foot window, it's kind of like, one requirement just says you have to have a 4,000-square-foot window to show you can do it. Where you actually put your septic system is-
It's not going to be 4,000 square feet for-
That was a giant point of contention.
It was a point of contention.
Yeah.
Right, cause usually in a subdivision, unless it's extremely narrow and prescribed, people decide later where the house is gonna be, and the septic system may be here or there. The point of the 4,000-square-foot window is just to demonstrate that the lot has the capacity, has the capability of accommodating the system. But that was absolutely a point of contention. Uh, and that's certainly something that we could put in our, we could make that change. That's an easy one to propose, and if we wanna do it, we can do it.
Yeah, definitely, to the average person, it definitely looks a little weird that it's not. Like legally, it's, it's a separate requirement, but it, it is kind of confusing, because, um, it's, if you're in the scenario that this, oh, a single lot is just unable to have much septic space once you add a building onto it, then if the subdivision calculates it with a region less a hundred feet, then, um, it's, it feels, it can feel contradictory, because of course they would have to get variance to put it there, right?
So that would be, I, I'll double-check, but I'm pretty sure that's a subdivision regulation change and a zoning change, but it's an easy language, it's easy language, so I can come up with that.
Do the members of the board have any opinions on this? Because the, the developer said that requiring that setback for the buffer would be restrictive.
Was this what we were talking about, the yield plan? Was that what he's mentioning?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I know there was, you know, back and forth about that. And who's right and who's not, so, um, yeah, I think that's something that we may wanna-
We can look at it.
No matter what, we should probably add clarifying language. If you wanna keep it, we should just clarify that this is independent.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, we can find other communities that have it more clarified, and just kinda piggyback off that, be helpful.
We could, we could. Um, yeah, a lot of them weren't that clear.
Yeah, well, develop our own clear one, I guess.
Well, yeah, the, I mean, the yield plan thing is always a bit of an art. But, um, but I'll, I'll take a look at it, and I'll bring something for us for the next workshop.
Another thing that we could potentially ask for is, like, technically, everything that the developer did to show us that the yield plan was viable was not technically required by our, um, regulations.
Right.
Do we want to have a criteria at which they need to do minimal design, um, proposals? Or do we want to keep it at their discretion?
It's to the board's discretion, really. Um, I think in that particular case, we typically have not required, certainly we don't require you to engineer it, um, particularly since we mandated. It's not something they come to us and say, "Let us do an open space plan." They're required to do an open space plan. So, uh, we typically have not, in this case, they went to a higher level of detail because it was questions about the viability of certain lots. So it was through our process that they provided more information. Needless to say, that then led to further questions about the viability of those lots. So we could certainly, though, again, we could take, we could take a look at our language, and if there's things we wanna say or require, we certainly can.
And if, like, right now, if the developer says, like, we don't want to, um, do, go any further in the detail and just say, "We believe that this is compliant," what can the board do in that scenario?
Well, under the ord, I mean, again, I'm not looking through it right now, but under the ordinance, they have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that their yield plan works. So it's up to the board to say, "Yes, we accept your yield plan." And probably one of the things that we should just think about doing procedurally, in the past, it's not been contentious, right? So the process has kind of gone along, because generally, it hasn't been contested.
Right.
In this case, it was contested. And, uh, because of that, it led to greater scrutiny and questioning of things that hadn't necessarily been questioned or doubted before. But I think what the ordinance contemplates is, is that there is a more formal acceptance of the yield plan. And that's something historically that hasn't happened, but one of the things procedurally that we want, wanna think about, cause what happened in that particular scenario, and of course, one scenario shouldn't always be what governs law, but, uh, in that particular scenario, the questioning of whether the yield plan was valid was continuing at, alongside the review of the subdivision. And that really made that much more challenging. What we may wanna do in the future, whether it needs to be better spelled out in the regulations, is there probably ought to be the board deciding whether or not they accept the yield plan before we move on. Because we're talking about, you know, really detailed engineering, you know, requirements on drainage while we're still questioning whether it's 22 lots or 24. And that just really doesn't make sense to have those conversations concurrently. We should close, put one to bed before we get to the other one.
And maybe we're all just towards open space developments that we don't do a whole lot of anyway, so.
There aren't gonna be a whole lot more, but it's-
But if they come up, this would be a good thing to have it.
If they come up, I mean, those are, so, so that's probably something that we can just tighten up in our regulations. Yes, what are you required to show? And then let's have a clear juncture as to when we say,
Yeah.
"The yield plan has been accepted, we voted on it, now we're moving on to the-"
Yeah, if there was any, like, problem with the yield plan at that later stage, it would've really messed up the project because of the ordering at which, uh-
It really would've, and, um, yeah, and-
The viability of the whole thing, it's-
That's right, and I think for everybody's sake, you want closure on a major issue like that before you start to get into, you know, for, for, our side, too, but, uh, before you get into highly detailed design on roads and drainage, and, and obviously, spending a great deal of money on the part of the applicant on engineering.
Yeah.
So it's, that's, I'll, I'll take a look at the ordinance and kinda make sure it's clear about that. Cause it was kinda later when I thought about, well, it's an issue before, but really, yeah, we should've, we should've made a decision on that.
Any, any development going forward that is in an area that people have a lot of personal interests in, there will be a lot of-
We don't know yet.
Yeah.
There will be a lot of-
There will be a lot of scrutiny, of course, that's inevitable. But at least in a case like that, if you can put a major issue, how many units to rest, then you can move on
Yeah.
and deal with the technical issues.
Yeah, because, yeah, the abutters were bringing up things regarding the yield plan up till the last meeting.
Up until the last meeting, that's right.
And that, that doesn't say as much, or, it says more when, when you consider how long that project was extended.
So, yeah, I'll take a look.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Having a clear order, I think, is definitely the best way forward.
Sure. Yes.
Anything else, Jay?
That's all I've got for now.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
So I guess, uh, when do we want to, um, address the, um, regulations for, in this forest tour more?
We're not.
So.
That has been, I guess, the- That has been, I guess, the stormwater regulations have been posted, my understanding.
They're finalized, we approve, we-
Yeah, we approved them.
But we were questioning them when we, we didn't want to approve them at that stage. We did it because we had to, not because they were ready. I don't think they were-
Well, there was a, there was a deadline, I believe, for-
There's a deadline for the-
Complying with the, the MS four permit.
Yes.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, which means that the, we weren't happy with some parts of the, um, post-development plan section. So, we're, we're under no rush, um, except that the, they're really strict and that might be a hindrance for certain businesses and, and just any development. So, what would be the process at which we do this? Would one of us make a draft and then propose it and then, then we'd have to review it for, is it still in compliance for MS four permit?
The way I understand it is it's not the planning board's, it's not the planning board's job. It's the administrator and the road agent that are handling. I don't know if, what did you understand?
Well, the planning board has their stormwater-
Yeah.
-regulations. I think we mentioned adopting what MS four was basically going to be.
Right.
Do we have to adopt something under, under appendix D? Do we have to adopt MS four under?
We would have to adopt an amendment, we would have to amend the regulations that we adopted, the stormwater regulations, um, that, that the board adopted. And we could, we could certainly do that. Um, I think the process would simply be to redline that version and then bring it to the board to see whether or not, um, it's something we want to move forward with. It would be not, it's not town meeting, so it's, um, you know, public hearing for the board. And then obviously, what we would want to do is get that draft to the consultant to see whether or not, um, there are any issues. I have taken a look at it and I think there are, the, the, the requirements around reporting, I think in particular. Uh, so I guess what I would, I would back up and I would say, we'd probably want to, um, do a redline or at least to highlight, these are the concern areas. And I think we, we would want input from Lou Karen, you know, the towns consulting engineer, in addition to the MS four consultant, to say, do we have the leeway?
Yeah, I think he did explicitly say that there is leeway.
Right, but where is that leeway and how much leeway? And we've got things about, um, during the construction, monthly reports to the planning board, then we have post-construction-
It's post-construction.
Annual reports and, um, you know, I don't know what the federal regs say, right? So, it's, what is, that's, I guess, where I have my hesitation, is we have to have that input to know.
I think it was specifically the annual, like, post-development annual reporting that was really strict. They had to hire-
It is strict.
An engineer.
Yeah, it was the biggest burden.
That's right, so if that's not explicitly required in the regulations, then absolutely, we can pull it out.
Yeah, I wonder if it's possible to have a certain criteria that is written out by an engineer at the time of development that the property owner can manually check if what they see matches those descriptions? And if it deviates, then at that point, they have to hire an engineer?
I believe they're, but they're required to have a plan.
They're required to have a plan. Whether they need to, um, the level of reporting, I guess, is the question. Uh, the frequency of the reporting is the question. And then to whom do you report? Uh, because some of the things, uh, some of the requirements in there are simply that their reports have to be available. So that if we were to ask for them, they would be there. A lot of those are simply like your maintenance logs. Um, you know, you have to have them, you have to maintain them, they need to be available. You necessarily have to submit them, so, I think that's, that's, the bottom line is what, what in fact did the federal regs require? And what was, you know, maybe taken from the regulations that another community had that aren't necessarily required? That's really what we don't know. We do know that, you, uh, not surprisingly, right? We all do that. The regs were in part based on regulations adopted in other communities, so. That's really, the question is figuring that out. Um, I did think about trying to, um, you know, look up the regulations myself. And I still might do that. Um, but I've also done that in the past and had just a horrific time, um, so.
We don't want to torture you.
We certainly do, we could bring that back to a future workshop.
And then, do we need to require that they hire an engineer to inspect it?
I don't know.
Because, because that's the most burdensome part, in my opinion.
Absolutely. Or is that an option? Or, you know, does it depend on the nature? I would have to think-
Maybe they can ask for a waiver depending on the complexity of the, um-
Right, so those, I mean, so that's, that's really the root of it, is we have to figure out what's in fact required. And that we have to do. And if it's not required, it's either discretionary or not necessary. Because I would have to think it's going to vary in magnitude depending on the nature of the development that we're talking about.
Absolutely, definitely.
Right.
Is, uh, the same consultant available to assist us now? I remember last meeting he said, so is that, do we have an idea of when he would be available? Or do we need to kind of look elsewhere?
I suspect that, um, we would need to do our research and we would need to come up with suggested language and then potentially request, gee, if, if you have the opportunity, could you? You know, the town has limits too, because there's limitations in the contracts.
And, yeah, I do know that that, um, con, the contractor we used for that, um, or consultancy used, he was not very, this, doing the regulations was not his favorite part of his job. He said that.
But we do also have Lou, at least, who, um, I think one of the advantages of, you know, again, we still have to figure out what the regulations refer, but I, I, I think that Lou Karen, who raised a lot of these concerns, had a very good sense of the degree to which any of these requirements were in fact burdensome and what was sure anybody could do that. Um, so, uh, getting Lou's perspective would be really, really valuable.
Would we want to do that from the start? Or would we want to do it, do some more research beforehand?
I think, I think, I think what would make sense would be to highlight those areas that are of concern. Pass it over to Lou to kind of get his thought. And at the same time, I think, maybe just try, and I'd be happy to try, to at least see, gee, can we, can, can we in fact find these regulations ourselves and figure out what's required? Um, you know, maybe that's not that difficult. Uh, again, I've, I've had success before and then I've had, gee, um, I'm just going endlessly down all these requirements. But never, so, I, I think it's worth at least that as our starting point. One of the things I think would be important is, do we agree that these are in fact the areas in the regulations that need to be addressed? Or are there other things that we need to address? We do have input that we received, which would probably help zoom in on kind of where are the real areas of concern. So, I, I said that would be a starting point and that's what we would do at a, you know, uh, uh, we would do that at a workshop. So, I could at least take a stab at, these are the areas I think are at issue. You know, get them to Lou and then gets, get some input as a starting.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
This isn't, we don't need, we're, we're in compliance, so we don't need to do this with any hurry.
Right.
Other than the fact that they're burdensome.
And again, this would be specific to the planning board's stormwater regs.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Jay. I know that was a lot, um, but a lot of things to think about, um, as you can see. Um, a lot of stuff has come up, um, past couple of months and these are, but I think they're important because, you know, they've been flagged and we need to address them, so. So, looking forward to the workshop and, um, it's like November twelfth, we'll-
Yeah.
Look at Northern Commercial.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on this or have any questions? Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Um, we're going to move on in the agenda. Uh, I do see in the audience this evening, two people from, um, could you just, uh, state your name and who you are?
Uh, my name is Hudson.
Okay, good evening.
Um, my name is here.
Yeah.
I'm married to the scouts.
Okay.
Just me, myself and I. Um, did, do some requirements for merit badge on citizenship.
Oh, okay, great.
One of our requirements is to go to a town meeting and talk about what we discussed.
Very nice.
Yeah, I was calling up earlier today and I happily invited them to come see us tonight.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. I hope you are finding, um, planning to be a fascinating subject.
Well, for your future efforts, if you haven't, no, if you don't know already, there is an online portal and the information that we talked about tonight is on that portable, so that might help you in pointing back.
Yeah. If you need proof you were here, your name is now on the log.
That's great, well, we wish you, um, wish you luck and, um, thank you for joining us this evening. That's great. Um, next item is committee reports. Any reports from any committees? Jeremy, I know we talked about economic, economic development, anything-
I think we beat that one to death. Um, but our next meeting is, uh, October thirtieth.
Okay.
At six thirty right here.
Um, I believe capital improvement is meeting next Monday, if I'm not mistaken. I thought that we said October seventh.
That's right.
I don't, has that been noticed, do we know?
I was wondering the same thing just the other day and-
Because I didn't see anything, um-
It's on my calendar, but it's, I have that as a reoccurring, so-
Okay.
I don't know, I haven't seen a notice yet.
All right, I'll, I'll reach out to Kim and find out. Um, Conservation Commission meets Thursday, are we here or?
Six thirty, fire station.
Six, five, six thirty at the fire station, so. And, um, we did have, um, the, um, NRPC, um, meeting, was that last week? Or the week before? I think it was the week before.
This week.
It was the eighteenth, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, so I attended that. Um, I know Kim Queenan was there, she's the chair. And, uh, it was a good meeting and talked about traffic and issues related to that.
Safe streets for all.
Safety street. Um, anything you want to add to that, Jay, or?
Uh, just, um, you know, we are working on a safe streets for all plan with three other regions. And there is a consulting firm that's been hired, BHB. They've been gathering public input and the concept is the plan will be, should be complete in January of twenty-five. So, that, like with so many of these federal grants or programs, uh, this was grant-funded. Once the plan is adopted, then communities can apply for implementation dollars to make improvements that enhance public safety.
Okay.
Transportation improvements.
Right. Um, the Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee, I believe, is meeting October seventeenth.
That's correct.
Um, that's in Nashua, I believe at the city hall, that's where they usually meet. Um, there's a, um, project, I believe, that's, uh, up for, um, review. Yes, here it is. So, um, if anyone has an interest, that is actually, those meetings are open to the public as well. So, if you're interested in attending that, you can certainly do that. And that's all I have for committee reports. Um, approval of the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Did anyone have an opportunity to take a look at those? Have any questions or concerns? Anything that they want to amend?
I didn't, I repeat, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything either. You know, it's always good to have another pair of eyes. And if anybody, um, doesn't have any amendments, um, I entertain a motion to accept them or approve them.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Jared, do I have a second?
A second, yeah.
A second by Travis. Any, uh, further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, those abstained.
Abstained.
All right, so, motion passes three, zero, three. There you go. Okay, thank you. Any other business this evening? John, do you have anything on for that?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Uh, Jay, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, anybody have anything? I don't. Um, if not, uh, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, a motion by Travis, do I have a second?
I'll second Travis's motion.
A second by Jeremy, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, abstained, motion passes six, zero, zero. Thank you for joining us. Um, we will see you, what's the next meeting, October?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. So, have a great evening and, um, we'll see you soon. Have a good night.